Welcome to the August 28, 2012 meeting of the Glendale City Council. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman, Manukian, Najarian, Weaver, Mayor Quintero.
The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Manukian.
Please stand and join me in the salute to our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. August 26 was Women's Equality Day and marks the passage of women's suffrage in this country. Today, it is hard to believe that there was a time in our nation's history when this was even an issue of debate, but remembering such history allows us to evaluate our current debates and weigh them upon the scales of time and along the arc of justice. Let us say a prayer of thanks to all the great women who fought tirelessly for the right of women's equality within the voting booth and beyond. We pray that women everywhere in the world will share equal rights with men one day and that they will not be oppressed, abused, or treated as second-class citizens. Let us pray that our own community lives up to this legacy by always honoring and recognizing the contributions of women to our city and its well-being, and let us pray for the women in our lives who have helped make us who we are. Amen.
Excellent invocation.
May we have your report.
Agenda for the August 28, 2012 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is postponed on Thursday, August 23, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next.
Three under presentation appointments. Three A is agenda preview for the meetings of September 4, 2012.
Ms. Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. That afternoon, for the Glendale City Council, we have a special meeting to commence at 3:00 PM. This is the Director of Community Development. This is regarding retention of new market tax credit advisory services to explore potential alternative funding sources for the Central Library Rehab Project. That evening, for the City Council meeting on September 4 to commence at 6:00 PM, we have three items under consent interim general manager of Glendale Water and Power. This is regarding service authorization for inspection, testing, and overhaul services of safety and relief valves for Grayson Power Plant and Shoal Canyon Compressor Station at GWP. Director of Public Works, this is regarding Safe Routes to School Project. Director of Public Works, this is also regarding contracts with consultants for geotechnical soils engineering and materials testing report review services for various capital improvement projects. Under action items, we have none. We do have one item under hearings, public auction of city-owned properties located at 765 and 749 Glenmore Boulevard and 1644, 1648, and 1652 Gladys Drive. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next item on the agenda is a mayor's commendation to Glendale Police Officer Brian Duncan and the Glendale Police Department Traffic Bureau in recognition of their traffic safety excellence.
All right, I will let the captain speak first.
Just a couple of words. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, staff, and audience. You may have noticed a large presence of police officers today. It's a good thing. We're here tonight to recognize the efforts of our entire traffic bureau, more specifically the efforts of our DUI enforcement team, and even more specifically, the efforts of one particular officer, Brian Duncan, who recently received an award. This team was sort of reconstituted this year under the Bureau Commander, Lieutenant Steve Robertson, who is here with me, in response to sort of a spike in impaired driver-related accidents, hit-and-runs, things of that nature. So they've been focusing on this since January of this year. And just a couple of things I wanted to point out to just give you a feel for what's been happening with this team, which consists of six officers that will meet here in just a minute. A comment I read today that was in one of these officers' evaluations that helped lead this charge, says after the first 12 days of implementing the DUI team, they made 120 arrests, including 70 for drunk driving, 20 for narcotics violations, seven for warrants, nine for license violations, and some other miscellaneous offenses. Pretty tremendous effort for the first two weeks of the program. Another comment from, you may have heard of the Avoid teams that we have, Avoid the 50, Avoid the 100. These are joint operations with the surrounding agencies. A comment from the director of that group to the police department, "You truly have the hardest-working officers out of the 27 agencies I work with, hands down. Because of the hard work of our traffic bureau and specifically our DUI team, you'll find that our access to grants from the State Office of Traffic Safety are increasing while some of the other agencies, actually, their money is decreasing." To highlight Officer Duncan, August 15 of this year, the California Office of Traffic Safety came down and presented Brian Duncan with a special recognition for traffic safety excellence for his efforts in helping to lower alcohol-involved deaths and injuries here in the city of Glendale. And a few statistics I wanted to point out, this is for this year so far, we've had 103% increase in arrests this year over last year for impaired driving, be it alcohol or drugs. 53% of all those bookings are from our task force officers that you're going to meet here in a minute. Between them, they have over 300 arrests so far this year for impaired driving. Our impaired driver-related traffic collisions are down 24% citywide this year as compared to last year, and our hit-and-run collisions are down 22% this year as compared to last year. So some pretty impressive numbers for the first year of this program being launched. With that, I'd like to introduce the members of our DUI team here. You guys want to stand up? We have Officer Brian Duncan, Officer Mark Tarzia, Officer Ryan Gunn, Art O'Brosnick, Matt Bolton, and Ben Bateman.
All right, and I have two commendations. I'll start with the DUI task force. It reads as follows, "An appreciation for your dedication and striving to make significant efforts toward traffic safety by making a significant number of DUI arrests, both alcohol and drugs, leading the departmental efforts to combat impaired driving and making traffic safety a priority." Signed Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale. And then a mayor's commendation to a very nice man and very successful officer, Officer Brian Duncan, Glendale Police Department. "An appreciation for your dedication and leadership in leading the way to educate and promote public awareness of impaired driving and traffic safety. Congratulations for being selected by the Office of Traffic Safety as a recipient of their Traffic Safety Excellence Award."
Up on the supervisor, Sergeant Mike Glassik.
Also, if I may, any officers that have family here to be part of this recognition, and of course, without the support of that family, these officers work very strange hours to do DUI enforcement, so I'd like to thank members of the family as well for their support.
Officer Duncan can say a few words, or anyone, if you'd like, please.
I wasn't prepared to say any words, Mayor Quintero. With everything being said today, it's a great honor. I'm very humbled to receive an award like this. Never thought in a million years that I'd be receiving this. We, when I say we, that's the entire team, have worked tirelessly for the last eight and a half months. We've worked strange hours, as Captain Stokes has said, and on top of that, ended up spending a night here at the station, going to court at 8:30, and then starting the day over again at 2:30 in the afternoon. Without the guys behind me, this would not be what it is today. These guys work equally as hard as I do, and without them and without our family support, we're a very close-knit group. And without our family and friends, we wouldn't be standing here in front of you today. But again, I'm very humbled to receive this. I know my partners are very humbled to receive a mayor's commendation, and we'll continue and strive to do our best for the city of Glendale. It's a city that I grew up in, relatives still live here, my mom's lived here for over 55 years, maybe longer, I think 62 years, she'll correct me. But I want to personally thank my wife, Lisette. Can she stand up? We have two, or, sorry, three beautiful children. I have Aubrey and Dylan. My mom, my godparents, my mother-in-law, my father-in-law are all here to support this. And without their support, I wouldn't have babysitters, I wouldn't have family support to work these strange hours. So again, thank you very much, and I'm very humbled by this.
Thank you, officer. I'd also like to have the individual members of the task force just at least give us your name so the public can get to know you, and I assure you that in addition to the tough enforcement action, they are very nice people who are there trying to save lives and protect the public at large. So please, come to the podium and give us your name.
I'm Officer Mark Tarzia, and I thank you very much for the recognition. Appreciate it.
If any of you have any family present, please introduce them as well.
Sure. I'd love to thank my wife, Stacy, and my son, five-month-old at home. It's difficult to work these hours, but she's been a trooper, so can't thank her enough.
I'm Officer Ryan Gunn. I'm here and very grateful for the award. I appreciate it, thank you very much. I'm here with my wife and newborn son, he's five months old as well. Will she could stand up, Melissa? Just like to say, I'd just like to reiterate the point that all the other guys are making. Families have made some sacrifices for this, and we definitely appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Hello. Officer Art O'Brosnick, I'm here with my wife and two children. My wife Eileen, and Chloe and...
And I'm Officer Matt Bolton, who I'd like to thank everyone for the award, especially the mayor. And my wife's here with the noisy baby.
Fifteen-month-old today, who thinks she's three already. Andrea and my beautiful baby Caitlin. We've been busy in the traffic bureau all this year.
And the last, I'm Officer Ben Bateman, and again, Council Mayor, thank you very much for the recognition. I'm here with my beautiful wife of lots and lots of years, my youngest son, my oldest son, Glendale Police Officer Travis Bateman, and his girlfriend, and it's been said already, a lot of sacrifice for what we do and the hours that we're working here, and it's nice to be recognized for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Quintero, Council. My name is Mike Glassik, and I've been with the police department for almost 30 years, a little over 30 years. And all the assignments I've worked for, hands down, these officers, these cadre officers are the most dedicated and hardest-working officers that I've ever worked with. And the numbers that Captain Stokes spoke about earlier is significant. And you can be rest assured, in the community and the residents, I'm a resident of Glendale myself, to know the streets are safe, and they're making a big impact on impaired driving in this city. So I'm very, very proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant. Also in the back is Chief of Police Rhonda Pampa, and I also see Captain Povolitis and Captain Rock are also back there. Thank you very much. Very much appreciated. And as one of the officers says, "In spite of working such long hours, there's a lot of young kids in the..."
That's a good one.
...the audience. It was his comment, not mine. Okay, next, please.
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
City Council Staff Comments. Mr. Najarian.
Briefly, I'll wait for kids to get out.
While we wait, sir, perhaps I can just add that we would like to pull off calendar for tonight, item 5D, and put that back on next week.
Is that the item that I said I was going to vote against?
Ironically enough, no, sir.
Pull 5, we'll pull 5D, set it for next week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This morning, in historic manner, the Los Angeles City Council unanimously voted against the construction of the 710 Tunnel. I applaud the hard work of Councilman Jose Huizar, who was our neighboring councilman just over the border, starting at the Eagle Rock area, as well as everyone else on the LA City Council who had the foresight to vote against the terrible idea for the 710 Tunnel. We can now look at other less-impact modifications to help the traffic flow, as well as alternative ways to get the freight and cargo traffic from the Port of Los Angeles to their ultimate inland port destinations. So congratulations to our colleagues in LA City. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else?
Well, I was out riding my bike this weekend, and I did the ride at Grassland to Dam with the North Ranch Mountain Bikers Association or Club. It was about 12 and a half miles, 1,400 feet of climbing, about two and a half hours. I will be at the Bodri Fire Road mountain biking ride this Thursday at 6:00 PM. If there's anyone who would be willing to come out there and challenge me, Mark, I would be more than willing to take you on. I think it'll be a fun ride, bring lights with you, because it's getting darker sooner. And every first Saturday of every month, Corba, the Concerned Off-Road Bicycleists Association, has a beginner's skills class in Malibu, again, Malibu Creek State Park. If you're interested in mountain biking, just go, it's free. It's very informative. I attended it a couple of months ago, and I've been riding since. It will do a great deal in getting you the skills that you need, the beginner skills that you need to some of these mountains. I'm looking forward to this Thursday ride. Thursday's ride, I haven't been to any of the Glendale rides. This will be the first. I tried the Brand Park ride, but it was a little steep for me. I'm hoping that this will not be that steep. So, Mark, hopefully, we'll see you out there. It's Thursday, 6 o'clock.
Be careful about throwing those challenges out, Mr. Manukian. You've got all the cyclists here in the back of the room, serious cyclists.
I know, I was afraid, I'm afraid that they're going to take me on, but this is mountain biking, they're all road bikers, I hope.
I don't know.
So, that's it.
Their comments? Okay, next, please. Any staff comments? Or none? Next, please.
Next item is items, including the minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
I do have a card from Milan Fustar on 5C, so let's pull 5C.
Pull 5E.
And 5E, like Edward.
And just to be clear, 5D was pulled off of the calendar to be rescheduled for next week, just in case anyone didn't catch that.
Move whatever's left on the consent calendar. Second. Roll call.
I will abstain on August 14th minutes.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes, with the abstention for the August 14th minutes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Do you read 5C into the...
5C is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding Mountain Dew Trail and Catalina Verdugo Trail construction projects at the Glendale Sports Complex in connection with the specification number 3468. C1 is motion awarding construction contract to Belfry Contractors, Inc. in an amount of $259,992, authorizing 10% contingency in an amount of $25,999, authorizing execution of necessary contracts, and rejecting all other proposals.
I have one card, Milan Fustar.
Evening, everybody. I'm basically here to speak a little bit about the sport, about Glendale Sports Center.
Could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Milan Fustar. And Glendale Sports Center is a great place to play soccer, at least used to be. So those two nice fields they are taking from the young guys, they are taken away from them. They're not going to play for six or seven months. They are giving to the ASO, which is nothing wrong with the ASO. You have to start playing somewhere. But these older guys, what are they going to do in the meantime for six months? They're going to drink, smoke, who knows what else? So we're going to have a problem. Used to be the best league in LA area, this Glendale Sports Center, I mean, in whole Glendale area, I mean, Los Angeles area. Now, the fields are really bad. I mean, when I say it's bad, they are really bad. They are not maintained, who knows for how long? They are patched really badly in a few places, and basically, what we are going to do, stop the league and give it to ASO, I think it's wrong.
Artie. There was a... The way this procedure works, this item has to do with the trails, constructing trails and so forth.
I didn't know, I asked the girl, so she fell in love for this, I didn't know.
Look, what you can do is, or you can come back or, you know, have a seat. At the end of, when we have oral communications, you're going to have five minutes that you can talk to us at length about this particular subject that you're discussing, ASO and all the rest of it.
No, no problem.
Okay? All right, thank you very much, sir.
This is an interesting, actually, interesting trail. Does the trail exist currently? Is it, is it, is the trail there, and it's going to be improved? I mean, it's a great little trail that can be used, we bike on it.
The Mountain Dew Trail, the shorter trail, the point 7...
No, not the shorter trail, the other one.
No, that does not exist. That will be a new trail. The Mountain Dew Trail is an existing fire road.
But it's worth noting that the Mountain Dew Trail will be ADA accessible, which is really cool, to be able to have folks get up in there regardless of mobility.
Okay, do I have a motion for 5C?
So moved.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
5E is Director of Information Services regarding telephone and network cable wiring replacement in the Perkins Fire Station 21 and City Hall Buildings. E1 is motion authorizing execution of professional services agreement with Veterans Communications Services, Inc. in an amount of $571,950.50, and authorizing a 10% contingency of $57,195 for a total not-to-exceed amount of $629,145.50. E2 is a resolution appropriating $629,145.50 to fund a project.
Mr. Manukian.
Yes, I pulled aside, I mean, I've made this point before, that when reports are prepared and presented to the council, it shouldn't be a summary. All the information that is relevant on these reports should be included in the reports, not just for the council, for the public as well. Here we have a report with background information, and it just lists the vendors, it doesn't give us more detail as to how much these vendors bid on this project. It gives us the final scoring by the staff, which is within reason, I guess, I don't know what the score is based on, and it has the resolution of appropriations with no further detail as to what the bidding was, and what did the staff base their judgment on, what the scoring was for the vendors and all of that. So this is the second time, the project that was similar before, not a similar project, but in a similar, in a similar format, as far as the report is concerned, was from, I believe, Public Works, if I'm not mistaken. And I made my point back then that we need the details on it, even though your judgment is great, but I don't like to see just what your score is on it, I would like to see what your score is based on, and I would also like to know what the proposed, the vendors, what they exactly proposed, at a minimum, their bid in terms of monetary bid, how much they bid on this contract, I would like to know. And for that, I will be voting no on this contract, or on this appropriation.
If it's the Council's pleasure, we can have Mr. Fraga walk through some of those, Mr. Manukian's points, well-taken. We list the proposed vendors, or the proposal submitters, the vendors, the weighting factors, and their final score as he indicates, but not the dollar bid. The low bid, obviously, is the 545, I think it is, 571, I'm sorry, but you want to give us a real quick...
Yes. Mayor Quintero, members of the council, Ed Fraga, Information Services Director. Apologize for not having that in the report, we will do so in the future. I did prepare, however, some information that I think might be helpful in that regard. If we go to the next slide...
Actually, the controller's right there.
Oh, okay.
On the top.
On the top, over here, got it. Okay. There were three vendors, as it shows in the report, that proposed, and these are, there was a couple of iterations on that. We bid this out, we did walkthroughs, we took the finalists, there were a number of vendors that initially were interested, we took the finalists, these three vendors, actually walked them through all the buildings, and had them really look at everything they were going to be dealing with, and we selected these three buildings as the primary buildings that we wanted to have done at this point in time. And those were the amounts each of those vendors proposed. Now, Veterans Communications, which is the one on the far right, is not the lowest bidder in this regard, but we made a judgment, what we did is we have, and this is what we do with all of our proposals of this type, we had a committee selected beforehand, three individuals who then read through all of the proposals, met with the vendors, discussed them, sent back clarification questions, got them to give us very detailed, and try to nail down their bids, because we were looking for a fixed bid, and vendors would take exceptions. So we got it down in doing that, and when we went through those proposals, I think I have it on the next slide, we went through these, these are the same areas that we use in each of our proposals. In fact, this is the general structure that the city uses on professional services agreements, and we vary the weighting before proposals are received, based on what we think of the particular project, what will be critical items. And as you can see, cost, we gave it more weight than any other factor. Even so, veterans, their proposal was much more responsive to exactly what we wanted. We found that in the case of a vector, they had 31 sort of caveats to their proposal. Nine of the 31 caveats had in them that these would specifically cause a change order. So they were hedging their bets a little bit. The city has had two prior experiences in building wiring, one with the, what is now the new police building. That project did not end well, the vendor went bankrupt on the wiring, and it was completed on bond. The Verdugo Job Center, the same thing happened... The Verdugo Job Center, the same thing happened there. So when it comes to building wiring, we want a vendor that, in their proposal, they look like they're a very solid vendor. In the case of Veterans, we have done work with them before. They did the UOC and we were very pleased with the work they did. So based on that evaluation of who this vendor is, what their response said or didn't say, what we thought the risk was of, of using that vendor, we judged the Veterans to be the, the far superior bid.
The difference between Vector and Veterans in terms of bids is approximately $80,000.
Thousand dollars, yes.
We couldn't have nailed down those caveats that they had with $80,000. And let me also say that in general, when staff is looking at a, at a bid, they will feel, feel more comfortable with contractors or vendors that they've worked with before. And it could be the case here as well. But couldn't you have worked with Vector and saved the city in $80,000?
We, we did. We, we didn't just take the bids as they were, we actually sent them all back. And then this is what the vendors came back with. So at that point, like.
And so going forward, your point again is very well taken, sir. What we'll do is include the, well, actually, those two slides.
These, these should have certainly been included.
Yes, sir. There'll be a table in the, the report.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Oh, move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
No.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weber.
Hi.
Eric Quintero.
Yes. Next.
Next is oral communications. This is a three-minute portion reserved for community event announcements.
Two cards, Vince Espinoza, followed by Mary Anderson Harris.
I'm Vince Espinoza. I represent Glendale Kiwanis, the Duck Splash. My, my voice sounds really low, so I'll try and keep this short. Last time I was here, I was asking for permission to hang our banners along Brand Boulevard. And I believe Mr. Manukian asked how people could get involved. So that's what I'm here doing today. We rolled out this banner program last year. We wanted to make something a little bit more effective and cost-effective for, for smaller businesses and even individuals to get involved and sponsor our race. And that's, we came up with this. For $250, you can purchase a banner tag and you can personalize that with business information, website address, phone numbers, even personal messages, within reason, you know, and good taste. And it was very successful for us. It dressed up the city a little bit during our, our race. We hang them for a month and people were able to do some creative things with advertising their, their businesses and also supporting our, our Duck Splash. So you can download this at our www.ducksforkids.org website. There's a tab there that you can click on and, and download that form, print that out and send it to us. Or you can go to www.glandalekiwanis.com and it'll, it'll take you right to that page. Like I mentioned before, we're doing that in conjunction with the, the K-9, the Glendale PD K-9 in the park event. And so we've kind of come up with this duck walking a dog type thing. And, you know, we really want the kids to get involved, but, you know, they all left earlier with the, with the PD. So we're, we're encouraging everybody to get out, come out. It's a good time. They can also go and support us by adopting a duck for $5. That will get them a number on a duck and we'll race those down the, the stream. And we may even have that council race that was, will do a better job this time, make sure they float down the stream.
Brugman.
The right duck won. That's all that matters.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. So that's all I'm here to do today is just kind of plug the duck race and I hope you guys can, can come out and support us.
Should give the public the date.
Oh, the date is October 13th. And we go from 10 to 2, but we usually linger on till about 3:00. And the K-9 event stops about 4:00 o'clock. So it's an all-day thing.
Right.
Thank you for your time.
Mary Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero and members of the city council. My name is Mary Anderson Harris and I serve in the Board of Directors of Family Promise of East San Fernando Valley. I think many of you are familiar with Family Promise. What we do is that we, we're a nonprofit and we help families who are temporarily homeless with food, shelter, job assistance and case management. And 37 families have been served since we opened our doors in July of 2010. We have a 90% success rate of helping these families back to self-sufficiency. On September 28th and 29th, we'll be holding our fourth annual Cardboard Box City Event here in Glendale in the parking lot of the Glendale Church of Christ. And I actually have a PSA we'd like to show you that'll give you the details.
... Saturday, September 29th from 2:00 PM in the Glendale Church of Christ parking lot, 2021 West Glen Oaks Boulevard. Box City shines a spotlight on the plight of homeless families in our community while giving participants an opportunity to see what it's like to spend the night without a roof over their heads. Box City residents pay a participation fee to sleep overnight and are encouraged to get pledges from family, friends and coworkers, much like a walkathon. Prizes are awarded for the most creative dwelling and most money raised by an individual. Join us for a fun evening of carnival games, dinner and a movie. For more information, pledge and consent forms, please visit our website or call 747-333-6082. The 2012 Family Promise Box City fundraiser. Together, we can end homelessness, one family at a time.
And Mayor Quintero, I sent you an email last week inviting you to give the keys to the city to our top fundraiser and we hope you're able to attend.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Mayor, I'd actually like to make a quick announcement as well. And it's regarding the event for the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation. It's going to take place on September 28th, Friday evening, and it's the first annual, hopefully, Glendale Dodger Night. And Glendale Dodger Night is going to feature our Boys in Blue, who will take on the Colorado Rockies. Here is, there is a website, glendale dodger night dot com. There's various levels of discounted tickets that are available, or you can buy them through the website. City Hall Community Services and Parks is selling these tickets. The Glendale Civic Auditorium is another location where you can buy the tickets in person. You can see the various levels that range from $16 to $55 for a lodge, loge box MVP, including the popular all-you-can-eat pavilion section. As many people know, the Los Angeles Dodgers have a long history with the city of Glendale. Dodger great Casey Stengel lived in Glendale for many years, for whom Stengel Field is named. And what's special about this evening is they'll feature fireworks afterwards. People can come with their families and then go, just my timer ran out. You can bring your kids, you can take, actually get on Dodger Field afterwards. There'll be a fireworks show, which will be very exciting. And also, it's Tommy Lasorda's birthday. So come out and help celebrate Tommy Lasorda's birthday, city of Glendale, and have fun and help raise awareness and some money for our parks and open space.
And with their latest acquisitions, they may actually be involved in a pennant race.
We can only hope.
Hopefully. Next, please.
Next is action items. At 8A is Director of Public Works regarding city of Glendale Draft Bicycle Transportation Plan and the Bicycle Transportation Account Grant Application Local Match. At A1 is resolution adopting a certain negative declaration. Two is a motion adopting the city's bicycle transportation plan. Three is a resolution committing a local match of $65,920 for grant funds from the state bicycle transportation account for the implementation of the bicycle transportation plan. And four is a motion providing direction staff on selection and implementation for road diet options.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. We have a rather momentous policy document for you that was last updated in 1996. Obviously, the world has changed a great deal and Glendale's changed a great deal. And so we want to bring to you this overall toolbox of different strategies and programs and potential projects for council consideration. You've seen a lot of this previously, but without further ado, Jono Bagdani coming forward to make a rather momentous presentation.
Well, and before he makes his presentation, this is probably going to be one of the last presentations that he makes along with Mr. Mitchell. So I want to thank him, Mr. Mitchell, the rest of the staff for the hard work that they've put into this plan and for their many years of working at the city of Glendale and working for the city of Glendale. I think they've both done an excellent, excellent job. There's younger staff members now that are going to take up the challenge. And I think they've been particularly well in working with all of the, the different groups, in this case, the bicycle community and, and business people. So thank you both for your long service to, to the city. I should, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, if I may have the PowerPoint, please. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as you have seen this presentation before, the plan has been developed to create a comprehensive network of bicycle lanes and routes throughout the city, create an environment for people to be able to ride their bikes through, in the city, increase number of bicyclists, promote health of the Glendale residents, enhance economic viability, reduce greenhouse gas emissions and develop and implement educational program for safe bicycle riding. We've gone through a number of stages in the preparation of the plan. We presented it to the Bicycle Advisory Committee that was formed. We've gone to the bicycle, in several meetings. We've been to the Transportation Parking Commission, Planning Commission. We've come to city council in the form of a study session to present and to get your comments. Then we had discussions on Honolulu Road Diet. At that point, we discussed whether it should be implemented or not. City Council directed staff to come back with options on the implementation of the road diet ideas and as part of the presentation of the final bicycle transportation plan for, for your approval. And throughout the process, the Bicycle Advisory Committee has been very effective working with us. They were members of the Bicycle Bike Walk Glendale. They've been members of the Transportation Parking Commission, Residents at Large, Planning Commission members. And what I wanted to present now is really what the, the document is going to help us in the implementation stage of the plan and what we will be seeing in the near future in terms of implementation. So the, the document has divided into short-range, medium-range and long-range projects. Overall, the plan's goal is to install 14 miles of bike paths. This is going to be the more expensive portion of the plan, like putting in bike paths through the vertigo wash. It's a long-term goal if that can happen. 19 miles of bike lanes and 66 miles of bike routes, essentially installation of charos. As we go through the process of.
Sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. Can you give us and the public a little better idea, delineate path, bike lane, bike route, how that would work for the general public?
The paths are, bike paths are areas where it's only for bicyclists. It's a designated area. It could be a one-way direction for bicyclists. It could be a two-way direction. So it's only for bicyclists, it's away from the traffic, it's protected. It may have landscaping on one side or both sides of the, of the path. So it's totally separated from the traffic. Bicycle lanes are somewhere between five to six feet. They're striped next to the parking lane or curb lanes. And they're installed in areas where we have enough width on the streets where we can put in the bike lanes. The bicycle routes are more of where you don't have enough width to install a bicycle lane. And you install the designation, what we call the charos. These are symbols that are marked on the pavement at certain frequencies that gives the indication to the bicyclists that they can ride the street that would lead them essentially to maybe a class two, which is a bicycle lane. And also makes the drivers aware that on these routes bicyclists can travel, will be traveling. So make it, make them aware. So those are the, basically the three types of designation. The plan includes, as is shown in this map, this is the north portion of the plan. It's a very smaller print, of course, but it's in our website. On the website, you will see clearly the different sections of this plan. And this is the, most of the downtown area and the southern section of the plan that shows all the different bicycle facilities that we're recommending to be considered as we go forward with the implementation. As I stated, the plan is divided into short-term, medium-term and long-term. And each one of those delineates what streets and what segments of the streets can be implemented in those different categories. For example, in the, the short-term, currently we have East Glen Oaks that we are, we have resurfaced, we put in a center line, and we plan to install bicycle lanes from Verdugo Road to, to Route Two, to State Route Two Freeway. And that would be already, as soon as the plan is approved, we will be installing the bicycle lanes. Beyond that point, beyond to the two freeway on East Glen Oaks, all the way to Shore Canyon, it will have designation of charos because we have a two-way left turn lane already in that place, in that location. So we're not changing the lane configuration, we're only installing a charo. So this is an example of as we go forward with street resurfacing projects, we will be installing the type of facilities that are included in the plan. In addition, in the next medium-range priorities, since we are already paving resurfacing Chevy Chase, we plan to install charos from Wilson Avenue, Chevy Chase from Wilson Avenue to State Route Two and, and beyond, we can continue with that, with that, with installation of charos. So again, that's included in the plan. Our goal is, as soon as the plan is approved, we have, as shown in our finding, funding plan, we have obtained $190,000. One is through the Measure Our Regional Funds and $90,000, which is TDA funds that can only be used for bicycle implementation, bicycle lane or path implementation. We have $190,000 here. And in the fiscal year 12 and 13, we have $400,000 in Measure Our Regional Funds, again, another $90,000 to the, for the total of $490,000. We'd like to come back to the city council in one big package, put in all the striping for all the bike lanes and the charos at once in one package. And that way, city council will see what we're implementing. It can be done within a year and it will be all done. Short of any other areas where we already have, within the next year, if we have a resurfacing project, we will not be installing those bicycle lanes or the charos on those streets because we don't want to come back and pave over them. So this, this funding allows us to essentially put in all the bicycle lanes and the charos that we can, is included in the plan. It's not going to be taking any lanes away, it's not going to take any parking away. It will not change the, the lane configuration on, on any of the streets that have been designated. So this is a good thing that within a year, we should be able to implement a lot of the facilities that are included in the plan. Also, as important.
I have a question.
Yes.
And approximately how many miles would that be?
I believe that would be approximately half of the bicycle lane miles and a, maybe about 40% or 50% of the type three, which are the charos that can be included in there. Again, the way we will bid this, it will allow us to increase it based on the available funding that we have. We can increase it as we go forward. It will be per linear mile of bike lane or with a number of charos. So we can install as many as we can to fit into the amount of funding that we have available. Also important to note that as part of this plan, we have the designated $100,000 for the Glendale Narrows Bike Path. Glendale Narrows Bike Path Bridge Concept Plan. That's, that again is funding that we received from Metro under the Measure Our Regional Funds. An additional $500,000 in fiscal year 13 and 14 that can also go toward the concept or the design of a Glendale Narrows Bridge. Also, we have for the Glendale Narrows Bike Way Culvert, there's a section that as the Glendale Narrows Bike Lane is being installed, as it connects to Flower Street, the portion that is on the perimeter of the Grayson Power Plan, there is a section, there is a culvert that we have to cover in order to make that connection. Funding has been set aside, about $450,000, that Parks and Recreation Department will be taking on that project, and we will be able to fund that construction of that culvert cover as part of the plan. So, the next phase, city council asked us to look at the road diets based on our experience in the dealing with the road diet project on Honolulu. We met with Mr. Ochoa, Bike Walk Glendale representatives, Public Works Staff, and we came up with ideas, how do we go forward with the future bike, road diet projects that have been outlined in the bicycle transportation plan? We have eight candidate streets. We discussed it that we will involve the Bike Walk Glendale representatives and the Bicycle Advisory Committee that we have in place to look at the exist, the number of road diet concepts that are in the plan, eight of them. Basically, we look at it and pick top three. We take those top three candidate streets to the Transportation Parking Commission, and then, based on the recommendation from the commission, come to the city council that these are the top three we think has a lot more merit than the other five. Then, we go do a public outreach on those top three candidate streets, receive input from the residents and the businesses, bring them back after the results of that, bring it back to the TPC and present it to them, and say, okay, from the top three, like A Street is the best one. We didn't have any concerns. People were supportive of it. And then, I've take the recommendation from TPC, bring it back to city council, get your approval, and then go ahead and implement that road diet. It could be top, all top three. It could be one of them. And then, we'll do before and after studies accordingly. So, we're seeking city council's approval of this process so that we can move forward in with the implementation or testing some of these road diet concepts. In addition, the bicycle transportation plan has programs for bicycle safety, encouragement, and SISLOvia idea, we will be working with Bike Walk Glendale and the Bicycle Advisory Committee to promote a lot more bicycling events and some, something similar to SISLOvia that people will get used to it on weekends or weekdays, areas that council member Najarian was mentioning, some of these bike rides, there might be first Thursday of the month or whatever day that is convenient to get group of people to start riding their bikes. It's healthy and it's better for the community. Also, in the areas of enforcement, education, making sure that people know how to ride their bike, we've had concerns about that. And we also want to make sure that the enforcement that takes place addresses the concerns of the bicyclists as they deal with the traffic conditions. And then, evaluation of the bicycle pedestrian counts. We will be conducting bicycle counts to see as we implement the different facilities, are we have, do we have more bicycle, bicycles that are using those facilities and what their experiences with those. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that concludes my presentation. Staff recommends the motions that are in the staff report for adopting the bicycle transportation plan and the funding resolutions for funding the, approving the environmental document. And we also have a grant application that we believe within the next month or so, we will receive the results of that grant. It's a $650,000 grant for creating a better bicycle facilities in the city of Glendale. There's a local match of $65,000 that we need approval from council to provide that as part of the local match if we get the grant.
Any questions?
Okay, well, I have a number of speakers. Ry Berg started, followed by Chinook Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. My name is Ry Berg. I'm Montrose resident. I just want to give you a big thanks and also a big thanks to the city staff. We really appreciate all the hard work that's been going on and the openness to work with us at Walk By Glendale. I just want to give you two quick stories. The first was, I went to Long Beach on Saturday. I rode their new separated cycle track, which is a curb that separates you from the rest of the traffic. And then, I rode onto some bike lanes. And then, I rode onto what's called the Bicycle Boulevard where they have some roundabouts and traffic calming. And then, I rode on their green lanes. And then, I rode back on their beach bike trail. Now, we don't have a beach, but I rode 10 miles and I wasn't scared or harassed once. And so, that's my vision of Glendale. The second story, and I want to point this one to Mr. Weaver because I've heard him say a lot of times that he feels that the bike lanes are just a false sense of security, is I was on the freeway this weekend on the 134, and I don't know if Caltrans was doing some work or what they were doing out there, but they had removed all the lane markings just for a couple hundred feet. But it was terrifying. And so, what I'd like to tell you is that we live our lives by the little white lines that are on the streets, and they actually do matter to a lot of us. And I would actually like to invite Mr. Weaver and any of the council members to join us on any of our upcoming events. And we just did a pastry walk this weekend. We visited a bunch of bakeries, and we'll be doing fun bike rides around town. So, I'd like to invite you all out to that. And finally, just thank you once again. I'm so happy about this and thank Jono for the wonderful presentation. I know Glendale is going to be a great city to bicycle in, and thank you very much.
I'd like to add, this gentleman rode his bike from Montrose to the city council meeting. Chinook Ramirez, followed by Mike Mohill.
Thank you very much. Regarding the Glendale drafting bicycle transportation plan resolution, adopting certain negative plan, I say I would not come to Glendale city bike lanes, not in the bus or on bicycles because I have just learned the hard way that they willfully reckless, malicious, and cut-throat who have no integrity, no honor, no sense of justice, nor commonsensical right or wrong are the Glendale Police Department farts, with the exception of the highly talented police chopper pilots and a few good officers. Again, they think of a higher nature. They're not petty. Worse than the violent and wicked criminal illegal aliens and homicidal mania gangbangers who are out there on the, on the bike lanes as well are the Glendale Police Department, i.e. Officer Ben Bateman, who is nothing more than a coward. And I will not be bullied, and thus, I would not bring any businesses to Glendale via bike lanes, buses, trains, and our aircrafts. I'm pulling out my business out of Glendale. It's not safe here. You will be unlawfully victimized by the cocky dismissive, dirty rogue Officer Ben Bateman. It's not worth it.
Hey, time. It's Ramirez, you have to stick to the issued hand, which is the bicycle transportation plan. Do you have five minutes at oral communications to talk about other things?
Okay, well, I just wanted to point the negatives of the bike lanes. If you can't be protected walking or as a pedestrian, how are you going to be protected in the bike lanes?
Time in.
So, again, my experience is that as a pedestrian, one who puts money into your economy here in Glendale, one who is an asset, not a gangbanger, not a criminal illegal alien, not vandalizing, not graffitiing, but a law-abiding citizen, we can't get protection from the Glendale Police Department, especially Ben Bateman? How is that possible? You know, illegal criminal aliens and gangbangers get more protection even on the bike lanes, and most of them are now riding and using your bike lanes. And not only that, but they grab people's items or belongings, and they're really good at it. If you are, if you've got your things at a bus stop or at a corner, they come up with their bikes and snatch your things. Now, you go to the Glendale Police Department, that's the last place in hell you want to go to. Again, the officers are not helping, but they are sabotaging your good efforts. Again, Ben Bateman is corrupted. He condones, approves, and cites and encourages violence, assault, and fear and intimidation to legal law-abiding citizens like me who, you know, can I help it if I'm a nerd? Can I help it if I follow the letter of the law? You know, we're not crazy. We just stand for something unlike him. Fear, you know, people who live in fear and misery, they attract each other. So, it's a compliment to me that I don't attract dirty corrupted officers. If anything, on the contrary, I stick it to them and expose them. Transparency is the game. People understand there are many criminals riding on the bike paths. You're going to get hurt, and you will see what I mean. Again, your Glendale Police Department, of those officers that I've already mentioned in the past and present are worthless. They are sabotaging your good efforts, and all I ask is change your police department, and you've got changes, the dynamics of the city will change to a better standing. Thank you.
Mike Mohill, followed by Eric Yasian.
My name is Mike Mohill. Glendale City Employees Association is upset because in 2010, they were the only union to take a salary cut of 1.5% while the other unions received no pay cuts. All the city unions, including the GCEA, can still retire at age 50 or 55 with 30 years of service and receive...
Where is the nexus to the bicycle transportation plan?
I'm coming right to it, Mr. Quintero. It's the next paragraph. Thank you for asking.
Okay, well, next time, make sure, make sure that you start up...
I'm staying right to.
Time in. Sorry, time out, time out. Make sure that you find a nexus with what we're discussing on this particular item.
It's my second paragraph.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, let me finish. I'll start. All the city unions, including the GCEA, can still retire at age 50 or 55 with 30 years of service and receive 90%, 75%, or 6% of their last year of income. Tonight, the city council will be discussing bicycle transportation. And local cyclists would very much like our city to allocate $65,000, which is approximately 10% of a local match grant of $659,000 to promote a mode of transportation. The bicycle transportation plan is supported by many civic organizations. As reported in the Glendale news press, Parks Commission ramps up Verdugo Skate Park fees. Chris Hall, age 15, a skateboard enthusiast, in October will be paying $3 daily fee or an annual pass of $50 to use the skate park. Chris Hall is not represented by any of our well-organized city unions or any of our well-organized bicycle associations. The city is broke. Utility rates keep rising. Roads are crumbling. Parks are dirty and trees would need trimming. Let us not forget the increases in dog fees, trash fees, utility user fees...
Now, listen, you're off the topic again. There is no nexus...
Sir, I am not off the target because I come right back in the next paragraph.
There's no nexus between the bicycle transportation...
It's still on the same subject.
Mr. Mayor, can we just take a break on the timing and just, Mr. Mohill, you have to speak on the topic of the transportation plan...
Let him speak.
Not bring, you know, topics that are only tangentially related to this, either advocate for or against it, or speak on problems you might have with it, but it's, you know, you're speaking outside the topic when you're speaking specifically.
City Attorney Garcia, I'm staying on top target, which is the bicyclist talking about a young man by name of Chris...
No, you're not staying on topic.
I am, if you let me finish.
They're not really making the nexus either.
If you let me finish my, my three-minute speech, I'll be on target.
What do we do here?
Again, I would advise the speaker, Mr. Mayor, I would advise the speaker to stay on the topic of the plan.
It is interrelated.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Mohill, to speak on the, on the item as it relates to whether the, the plan should be approved or denied or what problems are with it, or how it might relate to other, you know, how, how his topic might, might relate to this, this particular plan.
Right, okay, we've already warned him twice, but he continues to go back to other topics. Is the third warning sufficient to have him seated?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, so that's it, Mr. Mohill, continue. You haven't lost any time as we've had these discussions. So, the next time you wander off the bicycle transportation plan, more specifically, the draft bicycle transportation plan, then you'll be asked to sit down and you'll make your comments at oral communications at the end of the meeting. Time in.
Young Chris stands alone. Bikers pay no license fees. Why skateboard enthusiasts have to pay a fee? That's the point, Mayor Quintero. Why does one group pay a license fee and another group does not? City employees are retiring with millions of dollars and becoming millionaires. Why don't city employees take a serious wage and pension concession so that expected city services can be restored and the quality of life of Glendaleans can be reclaimed, Mayor Quintero? That is the issue of my point here. We have bicycle riders, and I bless them all, and we have a skateboard enthusiast. And who here is speaking for him? Who speaks for young Chris? Are you going to speak for young Chris? Are we going to have to have him pay $50? And the people who ride bicycle pay no fees at all. Is that fair, council members? Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill. For some fairness...
Well, actually, Mr. Mohill, are you recommending a bicycle license fee? Is that what you recommend?
Well, how about a fee for riding the, the, absolutely, a bicycle fee? If Chris can pay $50 a year, and he's only 15, most of the people who ride a bicycle are adults, and they can afford the $50. But can Chris afford $50 a year?
Thank you for your...
And then, you want us to allocate $65,000. Thank you.
Eric Yasian, followed by Colin Bogart.
Mr. Mayor, the issue on the, the skate park, just for your edification, council knows this from the budget program, budget adoption process. We had a number of folks, particularly users and parents, saying that they would gladly pay a higher fee if it meant that we were able to keep the skate park open. The commission took the matter up as a way of satisfying that willingness to pay more money in order to provide that level of service. It's kind of an apples and oranges discussion.
Mr. Yasian, I know you can afford a bicycle license fee.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Eric Yasian, a resident of Glendale. I want to first thank everybody, staff, city council, especially the Transportation Department for everything they've done to get this process from two years ago to now and get a bike plan. That it's not, while it's not everything we want, I think it's a really, really good start. And, and one really positive thing in the last two years that has come out from this process is the number of people who we've met and have come out in Glendale, residents and non-residents, that fully support making the city a much better place to walk and bike. And I think that's a vision we all share. So, I want to thank the staff and everybody who's been part of that. And we hope that as this plan gets approved, implementation is going to be a big, it's going to be a big deal, and we really, we're positive that the staff and city council are going to be supportive of that effort as well. I do want to also recognize Jono Bagdani, since he's going to be leaving this week, for all the work he's done. And Jono, I do have, we do have something that we're presenting on Walk By Glendale on behalf of you, on behalf of Walk By Glendale to you. It's a certificate of recognition, and it says, "On behalf of Walk By Glendale, we appreciate your 21 years of leadership in making the city of Glendale a safer place to walk and bike." So, thank you for all your work.
Colin Bogart, followed by Alex Bartosoff.
Mayor Quintero, city council members, city staff, good evening. My name is Colin Bogart, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the LA County Bicycle Coalition. We have members who live here in Glendale. Of course, Walk By Glendale is, is the local chapter of our organization. And as you know, I worked here in the city on the Safe and Healthy Streets Project for two and a half, almost three years. I also want to briefly mention, you may not be aware of this, but actually, only in the past year has Glendale not been my daily destination for my job because I actually had a job working for a small company in here in Glendale for nine years before I got hired by the Bike Coalition to work on the Safe and Healthy Streets Project. And I can tell you, for several years, I commuted by bike. So, I've been riding my bike in Glendale for quite a lo, quite a while. But what I want to do real quick is I'd like to offer a broader context to the bicycle transportation plan. There are 88 cities in LA County, and only a handful of those cities have bike master plans. But a lot of them are working on creating one or revising one. And I can tell you that just today, I was in the city of Linwood, helping their city staff to prepare for a bike count. And yesterday, I was in the city of Pomona, helping them do the same. Both cities are working on bike transportation plans. So, you are in good company. I want to stress that this plan is not really for people you see riding bikes today. These people are already bold enough to assert their legal right to ride in the street, whether for transportation or recreation. Now, this plan is for people who might ride bikes if the facilities were present. No, this plan is for people who might ride bikes if the facilities were present. In the two and a half years that I worked on the Safe and Healthy Streets Project here in Glendale, I can tell you that everyone I spoke to said they would ride a bike if they felt they could do so safely, without fail, every single person. In fact, when I went to community organizations to speak, some of the city staff who joined me were stunned to see the room of people nodding their heads when I asked that question. It's really stupendous. And if you have any doubts about the latent demand for biking, all you have to do is go to Seek La Via on October 7th, and you will see over 100,000 people riding on city streets free of car traffic because they feel comfortable and they feel safe. And so, implementing a bike plan is a step in the right direction. It's a step that you are taking for the future of this city, and I commend you for it. I'm very excited to see this come to the council tonight. And I do also want to recognize and thank Mr. Bagdanian and his staff, because I know they put a lot of time and effort into this plan, and I'm very excited to see it come to this point. And I applaud the city of Glendale for moving in this direction and urge you to fully embrace the bicycle transportation plan.
What was it, that city you said, where they have 100,000 riders?
Well, the city of L.A. is doing another edition of Seek La Via on October 7th.
Which is what?
It's basically, they close about 10 miles of city streets to car traffic, which will allow people to bike, walk, roller skate, whatever they choose to do. This is, I think, the fifth time it's happened, and it's huge. And you can't really appreciate it until you actually go and see it in person.
When is it?
Sunday, October 7th.
Okay.
Actually, no off-road bikes are allowed, though. No, everything's allowed. Tricycles, tricycles are allowed.
I have road bikes as well.
Quite an event.
I can't jump with them, though.
Alex Bartrosow, followed by Bill Weisman. That's my final card.
Hello, my name is Alec Bartrosow. I'm glad you asked about Seek La Via. I have some door hangers that provide a map of the event, and also the date and location and all that stuff. So, here's copies for everybody.
Can you ride your bike to that event from Glendale?
Yes.
Yes, we do feeder rides as part of Walk By Glendale. So, if you're interested in riding from Glendale to Seek La Via, you're welcome to come with us.
Since Alex's time hasn't started, I'll just say that they've also talked to us about doing a branch that would go through Burbank and come into Glendale. So, that's in the process.
Is it safe riding with you guys?
It is. Join us. It might be a bit challenging for you.
It is. It will be.
We'll see. We'll see. Can you keep up? So, I'm here to support the bicycle transportation plan, as I've stated in the past. I'm a resident of downtown Glendale, and I feel like there's a lot of opportunities downtown for people who live in the area. Ever since we started Walk By Glendale through outreach events and campaigning and events, we have met a lot of people downtown that are in my generation, that are very interested in the bicycle transportation plan. And they feel that it'll make the streets of Glendale a lot safer for all sorts of users, not only bicyclists, but pedestrians and drivers as well. And on that note, I think Colin mentioned this earlier, this is for future residents of Glendale as well. I was looking at the various developments that are happening downtown. There's four in particular, the Broadway Lofts, the project on Brandon Wilson, the Lemley Project, and the Lexon Orange. Those projects are going to bring 800 new units to the city of Glendale, and downtown specifically. And I would love it if there were opportunities for those new residents to stay out of their cars and maybe be discouraged from adding further congestion to downtown by getting on their bicycles and walking around. And I think the bicycle transportation plan really lends itself to that kind of community. The last thing that I want to mention is on the road diet considerations. I hope that the city of Glendale's Transportation Department also considers collaborating with the Planning Department. I know that Planning is now doing the South Glendale Plan, and I think it would be a good opportunity for, to tap into that and also collaborate with them on what options we have as far as the road diet goes. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Bill Weisman, that's my last card.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Weisman from far north Glendale, and I'm here tonight in support of the bicycle transportation plan. I know an awful lot of work has gone into it, starting at the top with our Traffic and Transportation staff. And this is kind of a bittersweet moment, because I know Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Bagdanian are both retiring, and we're certainly going to miss them, and this city is certainly going to miss them. And they helped coordinate an effort that involved commission members from both TPC and Planning, and a number of community members, in helping to put this together. And it has been an effort that has gone on over several years. And as some of the other speakers have mentioned, this really is an investment in the future of Glendale. It's an investment in coming years when the price of gasoline is going to keep getting higher and higher, when we're going to have more and more pressure to get people out of their solo-driven automobiles and encourage them to use different means of transportation. It's definitely going to be an issue in terms of community health and public health, in terms of the obesity epidemic that we are encountering, especially with young people. And so, I thank you very much for your consideration and urge your support for the plan. And by the way, I don't think there's like a bike park in Glendale that has a fence around it and facilities where bicycle riders go in. And maybe we should be charged a fee if there was something like that. But unless you're going to also charge skateboarders for just riding on the sidewalk, I'm not sure that Mr. Mohill's comments really make any sense in that context. So, thank you again for your support, and I appreciate it very much.
Okay, that's the final card. Comments or questions from the city council? Ms. Friedman?
Well, I'm very glad to see this plan come forward after so much work from staff and from the community. And I also want to thank Jono and Tom Mitchell for all of their hard work. I'm really sorry to see both of you go, and I just hope that the staff that remains has the same commitment to this project as the two of you have shown and the same leadership, because we're going to need that going forward to implement this plan. So, when I decided to run for city council, it was really because I had a vision for the kind of city that I wanted to live in. And that city includes a city that offers people choices of mobility and offers safe streets for everybody. And this plan is a very big step in that direction. I was recently in Boston. Actually, I was there over the last few days because my grandmother was moving out of a nursing home and back home, and it was traumatic. So, I flew to Boston to sort of help with that. And I spent a day going downtown with my cousins. And of course, in Boston, you're not going to drive downtown, and it is so pleasant to be able to walk a few blocks and get on a light rail and go downtown. And when we were downtown, my cousin was there with her teenage son, and they said, "Boy, it's such a nice day." You know what? Instead of jumping back on the train, we're going to rent one of these rental bikes, because they have bike rental stations, and we're going to ride the bike to Cambridge down the bike path that they have along the river, and we're going to take the train home from there." And they did it. And what kind of a quality of life does a city offer that allows those kinds of choices and those kinds of opportunities for its residents? That's the kind of city that I want to live in. A city where if you want to be healthy and find ways of doing it outside of a gym and maybe build in the sort of exercise into your everyday life, doing things like biking to the store, maybe it's only a mile away, pretty easy to bike, or bike to work just downtown, it's only a couple miles, that you feel safe enough to do that, that you could have that choice. And we're getting there. We're slowly getting there. But the idea is that through the implementation of this master plan, along with the education that it provides to cyclists and to motorists, we get to a place where more and more people start to feel comfortable doing that. And when that happens, we start to have not only a population that's healthier and safer, but we also have a city that does start dealing with traffic congestion in a real way, because every person who's cycling is not riding in a car in front of you at a stop at a light and is not competing against you for a parking space downtown. These are all reasons why, as residents, even if you don't ever want to ride a bike, you should support this, because it takes cars off the road, it makes people healthier, and it also reduces, as they said, greenhouse gas emissions, our dependence on foreign oil, and what that leads to in terms of wars and other things. I mean, there's all kinds of good reasons for this to happen, and there's all sorts of good reasons for us to invest money in it. And these are all reasons why it makes sense to invest in this sort of infrastructure. So, this is why I'm here. This is why I ran for council, is to help bring that kind of vision of Glendale forward. And I'm so proud that, you know, with the help of the residents and Walk By Glendale, we now have a large group of people who are willing to work to make that happen, and they've done that. And like a couple of the speakers said, I have heard from so many people, not young, healthy people necessarily, but all kinds of people saying, "Gosh, I would really love for this to be the kind of city where I feel safe riding a mile to the grocery store, or I feel safe to let my children ride their bike on the street." That's the kind of city that a lot of people want to see, and that's what we're moving towards. So, I fully support this. I support not only this is a policy document, but that we really use it as a blueprint and that we commit to implementing it. That's going to be the next important step, and as long as I'm here, I'm going to keep pushing for that to happen. We've done a lot. We've done more with bicycle infrastructure than other cities that I know in a very short amount of time. And I think that the volunteers and the activists should feel very proud of that, and hopefully that'll just keep going. So, thanks to everyone, and I will be voting for this.
Thanks.
I have some comments. But first, I'd like to direct a comment at you, Mr. Mayor. I think you were extremely generous in affording Mr. Mohill his First Amendment rights during that discussion.
And Viall.
Merely lacing and interjecting the word "bike" or "master plan" in a tirade against pensions does not make his comments pertinent to the issue at hand. But I defer to your best judgment in that, and you showed more patience than I would have shown, and I applaud you for such decorum in the running of this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Secondly, I strongly approve this plan. I just have one caveat, and that is, when we do narrow down the road diets and the, actually get to that stage where we're considering it, what, I think the lesson that I, perhaps we all learned, is that we have to do an extensive amount of community outreach so that the community does not feel surprised or feel threatened or in any other way coerced by this. Because an unhappy community means unhappy voters, and unhappy voters means, well, you can fill in the gap. So, let's be sure that we pay extra close attention to not just the engineering issues, but also the outreach issues. I know you did a great job previously in that, but perhaps even that effort, that Herculean effort needed to go a little bit further, maybe over a little bit greater length of time, so we don't run into that sort of opposition that we had last time. And it is rather, it is rather fitting, Mr. Bagdanian, that you're presenting this item at this point, at the end of your career, because when I first started with the Transportation Parking Commission back in 1996, this was, I think, the first issue that you brought before us, the nascent bike master plan. So, we have come full circle in 15 years. So, that's great. I do share Ms. Friedman's vision of Glendale as having alternatives towards transportation. But folks, a vision by itself isn't going to get you anywhere. You need the money, and that's where I can help. Because, can we put that slide back on? It's item, the implementation funding availability? Oh, it was somewhere in the middle of the, in the middle of the PowerPoint. Actually, fifth from the end in his PowerPoint. And I think to a large extent, our ability to implement these projects, aside from community issues, there you go, thank you, aside from community issues, are the ability to fund the infrastructure. And we can solve these problems and get this further if we pay special attention, as Mr. Bagdanian and his staff did very well throughout the years that I was paying attention, through the MTA. The MTA has funding that is available for bikeways. Burbank got a ton of money for their, was it the Chandler Boulevard Bikeway? A ton of money through the call for projects. They submit an application, and there's hundreds of thousands of dollars available for different modes of transit and transportation. And biking is definitely one of them. Bike lockers and bike storage near our transportation hubs is one of them. The rental bikes, Bike Nation, I think, is one of the vendors, is another way to get that done. So, let's play close attention. As long as I'm still on the MTA board, I'm going to support any sort of bicycle funding for this area. Secondly, let's not forget Measure R. The voters will be faced with an opportunity to extend Measure R this November. It's going to be called Measure J. Now, although a lot of that money is earmarked for transit projects and for other modes of transportation, clearly, an extension of Measure R, in this case, it's Measure J, would essentially double that funding for us, if not more, and advance that money to the very front. So, if these are our first three projects that we're thinking of completing, scroll through the book and pick maybe the next four or five that we're going to have funds available to do. So, that's Measure J. That's a shameful plug for Measure J and Measure R. You know, I've paid the price for supporting it, and at this point, I'm all in. So, I got nothing else to lose, I don't think. But Measure J, folks, will provide additional funding for bicycle and alternative transportation for not just Glendale, but the whole county. So, I do support this, Jono. This is your swan song, I guess, and Tom, and everyone else on your staff. And I'd like you to sign a copy of this for me before you leave. Thank you.
Okay.
I also support the plan, and a long time coming. Congratulate Jono and Tom, actually. My preference is for dedicated bike lanes, actually. I think they're safer and easier to maneuver and easier to stay on. Basically, they're safer. I've started taking my bike to work once, one day a week, and I must say that it is, and I live in the Chevy Chase Canyon area, up in the hills, so it's kind of a chore getting back up the canyon, going down, it's great. But going back up, it's a chore. But I'm very weary when I'm on the roads, even when there are sharrows, when there's cars coming behind you, I always have to turn my head, make sure that they know that I'm on the road, in case there are parked cars I have to watch out for, people opening their doors. But surprisingly, what I've found is that in the downtown, when I'm in the downtown, getting around is a lot faster with a bike than it is with a car, which was surprising to me. And on a number of instances, that was the case. So, I prefer, if I'm on the downtown, I prefer riding a bike to a car. But, you know, days like tonight, I can't go back up the canyon in a suit, so that's, you know, that's not going to work. Again, I support the plan, and hopefully, we can implement it sooner rather than later, which is, which is my goal, and I'm sure it is the goal of the council as a whole as well. So, thank you for all the work that's been done, including Bike Walk Glendale. Maybe I'll be out there with you guys, kind of, you know, following you guys about a couple of miles behind you when you're trekking down to Los Angeles for that day, so.
Is your generation allowed in that group?
No, it's not, but I can give them a run for their money.
Right on, right on.
Don't let them hold you up. Mr. Weaver.
Well, Jono and Tom, going to miss you both. You've known my position on this for years. It hasn't changed. You'll feel the same way. I know I'm a minority, but, you know, I was born in this city. I'm an old man. I'm in my 70s. I have a bike in the garage when I want to ride it. Now, I would go down to the L.A. River and get on that bicycle path where I know nobody is going to come along in a car and hit me. I could almost ride to the ocean. I could almost ride to the ocean. When I went with my family, we'd go to Santa Barbara and Oxnard and run along the beachfront there for miles on a bike. And when I was in elementary school, I rode a bike to school. But, like I said, I'm an old man. Times have changed, and I guess I don't get it. I've heard, hearing council colleagues say they've moved here and they got a plan, and the city's going to change. Well, I like the city that I live in. I've been here all my life. I was young, I guess it was about forty-some thousand people in this city. I watched it grow tremendously. I watched the headache of increased cars, increased speeding, increased accidents, everything. And it's not exactly what I want. I just don't see how we're going to get people out of their cars in the blazing sun or in freezing cold or rainy weather to ride bicycles. My plan, a long time back, in the downtown-specific plan, is to build housing downtown and have people walk to work, not the other way around. Looked at the report, I could only glance at it because I only got it yesterday. I've seen drafts and stuff. But certain things like the road diet test. You saw what happened when we thought we knew where it was going to go, and then we went to the public, we got burned. It did not involve the public enough. Look how many here tonight either voice for or against the bicycle plans. I understand this report says we're going to go ahead and we have the grand money, put in sharrows, bike lanes, turning circles, all of it without any public input. I know when we did traffic circles in years past, we had the committee down here. "What are you doing, tearing up the road and putting in these turn circle stuff?" Well, that's to slow traffic down. But doing all these things without involving the public, I think, is wrong. Stakeholders, I think I read in here, generally supportive of the plan. Generally supportive doesn't tell me they greatly want it. They're listening, "Ah, it's okay." When you get down to the details of it, that's something else. And the group, the stakeholders, represent an extremely small percentage of the people in this city. The report says it. It doesn't speak to what the community as a whole thinks. Now, how do you get their opinion? Impossible. You can't even get the people in this city to go out and vote. You can get 22% to go out and vote in an important election? How are you going to reach them on bicycles? Isn't going to happen. What they say the public doesn't like, they don't like aggressive drivers. They don't like speeders. Wow. Anybody in this town like that? No. What do they want? Bicycleists? More bicycle infrastructure. Bike lanes on major streets, not on secondary, but on the major streets. Locker rooms, showers, street repaving, repaving streets we've already just recently paved. Painting all these lines on. Traffic calming methods, like we've never done that before. Increase the traffic volumes on the streets. Wow, now I wonder how we do that one. And then more traffic calming methods. All this has money attachments. You know, I'm just different on that. Just my take as an old man. State laws, states, and the reason I have this, I had five years up, so I had to take the Tesla over if I could continue to drive a car. Section in here devoted to bicycles, which I looked at, and it says bicyclists must stop at stop signs and obey traffic lights and most other traffic laws and signs. Well, let me give you two examples. I was riding, driving down Chevy Chase to Harvard to turn west on Harvard to go to the Americana. There's a bicyclist riding in the lane with the sharrows, coming down Chevy Chase ahead of me. I had to switch over their lane and go along because I was moving at a faster clip than he was, and I watched my rearview mirror. He came around the corner and got up and was riding down the sidewalk. And down the road, there's an old couple coming. Oh, he pulls back out into the street, and then he goes back up on the sidewalk again, and he ran through the stop sign.
Sorry.
Oh, I think he was a little younger than you.
Was he?
Looked like he was late for work. Another one, coming down same street of California. This guy's weaving in the traffic lane. Comes up to say, "I'm stopped because there's a stop sign." He just cruises right through it, watching my rearview mirror, goes half a block down and decides to make a U-turn, comes up, runs through the stop sign again. He catches up with me at Verdigo. What does he do? Straight through the signal because there was no traffic coming. Oh, and then he had some garbage and he threw it on the street. He broke how many laws there? Another example. This book says, "Any rider under 18 is required to wear an approved bicycle helmet." How many kids under 18 have you seen without a helmet? What I'm getting at is, where are you going to find the police that already can't control the drivers of cars? We heard tonight, some impact. The most common complaint I get are the speeders in the street, the ones that run the lights. How are you going to be able to take care of the bicyclists too with our small police force? You can't. They say most of the riders on bikes are recreational riders. That's fine. A very small percentage are riding to go to work or whatever. I see them all over. Interestingly enough, Glen Oaks Elementary School started, I haven't seen one kid on a bicycle yet, not one. See the parents walking to school or dropping them off, no bicycles. In fact, we have bicycle racks right down here at City Hall. I'm here every single day. I've never once seen a bicycle in those racks, not once. So we're talking about over time making substantial financial investments in this city for bicycles. And I'm hearing the new norm in this city, real reality. We're not going to have as much revenue as we ever did before, and we've had to cut $18 million out of the budget, $15 million last year, laid off a couple hundred employees. So wow. Are we going to live on grants to do everything if the grants don't dry up? There's no guarantee on any grant. So from my standpoint, when there's enough police available to police the roads on cars, control them, then I'll be willing to sit down and discuss bikes when there is sufficient funds to do so. Not fiscally responsible to serve a very, very tiny of the population of this city. Out of 191,000 people, how many do you see on bikes? 1%? 2%? Spend a lot of money? To me, doesn't make sense. Now, my colleagues disagree. That's okay. That's my opinion. I guess I'm an old man. My time will come in the next 20, 30 years, I hope. Hope I live that long. And I'm going to go to my condom in a forest lawn, leave the bike at home for the next generation to ride. Jono, I appreciate what you and Tom and your staff have done, all this work. I do, I just, from day one, I've said I don't agree. I haven't changed my position. Yes, bicyclists are great. I enjoyed it when I was young. But in this city today, heaven help the bicycle riders that try to deal with the cars. No bicycle rider is going to win when it comes to the two of them meeting up. So thank you for listening. Take a bow. Thank you.
All right, well, I was going to start on a totally different tack, but since Mr. Weaver kept mentioning age and age.
Well, I am the oldest one.
It just so happened that, when was it? I think actually last Tuesday, I spent some time with a 68-year-old man, a fairly wealthy man from Seville, Spain, and I've talked about it in the past, how that city with no bike culture at all went from, literally, I forget, 500 bike trips a day to thousands of bike trips every day, when the local government and the state, the provincial authority, decided to do bike paths and bike lanes and bike rentals and facilitate the bicycle movement, including coordination with the light rail lines, bus lines, airport, train station. But this particular man, like I say, a 68-year-old guy, he used the same word in Spanish that I used in English, how it transformed the city. And he said it transformed his life. He had a Mercedes-Benz coupe, real nice car. He said he rarely uses that car anymore. He rides all over Seville on his bicycle. And when I was there, I noticed the same thing. There were older people, obviously senior citizens, everyone gets a card, and so you don't have to have your own bike. You actually just swipe the bike, take it, go to wherever it is you're going, and there's a kiosk there. You check it in, or the bike itself has a chain that you can, you know, put next to a pole or whatever. But it was just so interesting that this older person, and I assume, you know, other people like him, lived in this city all their lives, never rode bikes, and all of a sudden, as a result of the infrastructure, began to ride bicycles. And it's not isolated to Spain. It's happened all over the United States, from places like Chicago, much to my surprise, in spite of the cold weather and sometimes real hot weather. Chicago has a super active bicycle transportation network. It happens in medium-sized cities in this country, small cities. I lived in Santa Monica for many years. Every weekend, I would basically park my car and ride the bike. I would ride my bike, my wife, my son, we were on bikes back and forth. We rarely use our car during the weekend. So this is something that I am behind 100%. It makes sense across the board. It makes sense economically, health-wise, in terms of transportation. This is the best thing that this city can do. And believe me, we're not blazing any paths. I mean, this is something that the whole world has done for many years. Cyclavia, I believe, actually started in Bogota, Colombia, I don't know what, 15, 18, 20 years ago. But it's happening across the United States, and the key is obviously to coordinate it with public transportation. That's the idea. If you can ride your bike and then get on a bus or get on a light rail, make connections, then it's going to be a lot of people that are going to, maybe they won't do it every day, no, they're not going to ride in the rain or the cold, although they do in Chicago, because I spoke to a number of Chicago aldermen, and when I kind of challenged them, "Well, what happens during the winter? No one rides." And they kind of laughed, and they said, "Yeah, people ride all the time, they don't sweat." So they can get to their, they can get to work and back without even sweating in that cold. Well, I don't anticipate that'll happen in Southern California. Vancouver, by the way, also has a very extensive trail of bikes that coordinates with public transportation. So it's not pie in the sky, it's not something that we've sort of pulled out of nowhere. This is something that I think makes a lot of sense. Another interesting situation for me was in the city of Seville. In the beginning, the merchants were very much opposed. "You're going to put a bike lane in front of my establishment? I won't, you know, have anyone parking here, et cetera, et cetera." Well, guess what? They started to get more business from the bicycle people going back and forth than they did from the parked cars, and it gets to the point now where people, or business people, who aren't on those bike paths or bike lanes are complaining that they're actually losing business, that all the business has moved to areas that are more pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly. So I'm very encouraged by what the staff has done and what all of the volunteers have done, and now I think the next step is to implement as much as possible and as quickly as possible. Now, to the issue of road diets and bike lanes and bike paths, my personal feeling and my belief is that we are better off if we do the sharrows, if we do the lanes, et cetera. If we lay out a broad network that begins to encourage people to use their bikes, just as important, begins to make motorists aware that they're sharing streets with bicyclists before we implement the road diets. And by the way, I equate that to what LA did in terms of public transportation. We should have, as a region, we should have done light rail line to Santa Monica, and we did it down to Long Beach, and the Gold Line and the San Fernando Valley. We should have done that first before we spent the billions that we spent on that subway to a parking lot in North Hollywood. And that's how I equate the road diet. I just think we're going to get a lot of, well, we're going to spend a lot of energy, we're going to have a lot of issues when we focus on road diets, when what we need to do is just implement an overall plan. So we'll see where that goes. But I'm just feeling that the first thing we do is educate the public, make it more efficient, if you want to call it that, for people to get around Glendale, and then we'll move to the road diets. I know we're going to be doing it at the same time, but I, I don't know, I feel a little concerned about whatever city or whatever street gets picked, and then we get into all of the issues that we've had in the past. But anyway, I'm very happy. This is a great night for the city of Glendale, a great night for everyone, regardless of whether they bike or not, and I think we're going to see a lot more bikers in this city. I think around the downtown with these projects that are coming in, we're going out of our way to make sure that they have bicycle racks and that type of thing, as well as the zip cars and so forth. So I think we're taking the right step. Glendale's ready for it. We'll coordinate with Burbank and with Los Angeles and with Eagle Rock next door, and we should have a nice, we should have a nice regional opportunity for bicyclists, recreational and for those that will use it to commute to work. Are there any other comments? If not, we'll start with the motions and resolutions.
One through four.
Can we do them all?
One through four.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers. Friedman?
Yes.
Chinookian?
Yes.
Garian?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Eric Quintero?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Next is oral communications, and discussion is limited. The item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And the city manager and mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Chinook Ramirez, followed by Mike Mohill.
This is part two, from the continuation of August 21st, my pilot story. I asked the co-pilot to tell the ramp controller we were going to stop short of the gate to make an announcement to the passengers. He did that, and the ramp controller said, "Take your time." I stopped the aircraft and set the parking brake. I pushed the public address button and said, "Ladies and gentlemen, this is your captain speaking. I have stopped short of our gate to make a special announcement. We have a passenger onboard who deserves our honor and respect. His name is private. His name is undisclosed. A soldier who recently lost his life, private, whose name is undisclosed, is under your feet in the cargo hold. Escorting him today is Army Sergeant, whose also name is undisclosed. Also onboard are his father, mother, wife, and two-year-old daughter. Your entire flight crew is asking for all passengers to remain in their seats, to allow the family to exit the aircraft first. Thank you. We continue to turn-- We continued to turn to the gate, came to a stop, and started our shutdown procedures. A couple of minutes later, I opened the cockpit door. I found the two forward flight attendants crying, something you just don't see. I was told that after we came to a stop, every passenger on the aircraft stayed in their seats waiting for the family to exit the aircraft. When the family got up and gathered their things, a passenger slowly started to clap his hands. Moments later, more passengers joined in, and soon the entire aircraft was clapping. Words of God bless you, I'm sorry, thank you, be proud, and other kind words were uttered to the family as they made their way down the aisle and out of the airplane. They were escorted down the ramp to finally be with their loved one. I respectfully ask all of you to reflect on this event and the sacrifices that millions of our men and women have made to ensure our freedoms and safety in these United States of America. And with that, I want to thank my beloved Gillespie Airfield Daredevil pilots extraordinaire for flying over LA County, including Burbank, Pasadena, and Glendale. And if you see me waving to these aircrafts, it's not because I'm loony. It just means metaphysically, I admire them, and I raise my hands and wave on safe touchdown. I love you, I love you, I love you. Why? Because pilots are of a higher, they are enlightened, they are higher souls and old souls. They are not petty. They function from their, from their part up, they don't, from their higher nature. And as like, you know, Officer Ben Bateman, who's corrupted, he is petty, he thinks of his lower nature or acts from his lower nature. That's how you can tell a different individual. How do they respond? How do they act? And unfortunately, I do respond with foul words every now and then, hey, but you know what? I ain't perfect. But at least I believe in standing for right and wrong. I've been spit on, I've been kicked, I've been beaten, I've been everything, but again, I stand my ground. And I feel proud, you know? And you talk about changes in Glendale? I don't think anything's going to happen until you get rid of your police officers who are corrupted. Ben Bateman is one of them. And you know what? You people, and I see that, all of you, including you, Mayor Frank Quintero, and I solely apologize, but you didn't know what kind of a Mexican I was, and I didn't know what kind of a military gentleman you were and are. And you are all brilliant. I've noticed that. You articulate so beautifully. The only problem is you're being sabotaged by your police department. And maybe right now you don't see it, but you will notice it after I'm gone, you will see exactly what I mean. You know, here, you're working hard, and you do talk well of each other, you, you just applaud each other's work, and you speak so well, for God's sakes, but you're being sabotaged by your police department. And people just hate coming here. Not only me, military veterans and elderly people, they've had bad experiences with your police department. Why? They're corrupted, they're malicious, they're wiltless, reckless, and they protect and serve your illegals and your gangbangers. So what's the point of coming to Glendale? Hell, I don't see any. I could just try to quickly get off the bus and come here, or, you know, how do I avoid the police department without an incident? I just say, you know what? The hell with it, it ain't worth it. You will see exactly what I mean. It will come to pass exactly as I say. Again, we have a problem with gang-banging epidemic here in Glendale, as well as your criminally illegal aliens, but that's your fault, you keep hiring them, and you are going to end up in trouble, my friends. Bankruptcy? I hope not, but thank you very much. Thank you.
Mike Mohill, followed by Harry Zavos. Hey, Mr. Mohill, I'm reading the second name so that that person will come to the podium. I notice you keep taking longer and longer to get to the podium.
Mayor Quintero, in all due respect, I notice how you select who speaks first and who speaks second, okay? So let's be honest.
No, I do it as it's handed to me by the clerk.
Okay.
Harry Zavos will be next, and then Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members, and fellow Glendaleans. My name is Mike Mohill. Recently, I came before this city council with the Bureau Labor Statistics dated 2011 with their 10 most dangerous jobs by fatal occupational injuries. The statistics did not include firefighters or policemen. Councilman Najarian, during the discussion of the possible electric rate increases, defended the need to transfer another $20 million from the GWP to the General Fund to pay for needy city services. Yes, you called them needed city services. And I ask, and I asked the public, which services should the council cut if they did not transfer another $20 million? The unspoken words were, we need the money to be transferred from the GWP into the pockets of our city employees, especially the firefighters and the police officers associations. These two, these two unions in 2009 and years earlier had endorsed both Mayor Quintero and Councilman Najarian with thousands of dollars from their political action committees. Let's not forget, Councilman Friedman, in 2009, also benefited with the PAC money from the firefighters and the Police Officers Association. In addition, in 2011, the Police Officers Association PAC also endorsed Councilman Weaver with an approximately $8,600 in a campaign mailer. The first obligation the government at all levels is the contracts city council members have signed with the different unions. In this case, today, these obligations are both unfunded and unsustainable. To pay for these union contracts, council members every week are looking for ways to increase our water and electric rates. Let us not forget the increases in trash fees, utility user fees, library fees, outdoor dining fees, dog fees, design review fees. And now even our kids are being dragged into this financial quagmire of politics by making even resident children pay for a fee for using the Verdugo State Park. Shame on this council. If Councilman Najarian was serious, seriously talking about cutting city services, why doesn't he first speak about terminating all union contracts with the city employees and putting these men and women on social security, just like the folks who paid the bills? This action would save the people of Glendale millions of dollars annually. Why do Mrs. Friedman, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Quintero, and Mr. Weaver continue to allow the city employees to leave Glendale in grand style at the age of 50 or 55 as millionaires? And small businesses and working families struggle to make ends meet. The answer is because our city council members have all received endorsements and large sums of money from these unions' political action committees. In taking the money and endorsements, our council members have become the spokesperson for the unions, and in doing so, have lost touch with the voters who put them in office. When there is a perception of a conflict of interest, let me repeat myself, a perception of a conflict of interest between our council members and the city unions in employment contracts, then there will continue to never be any serious negotiations between the parties that would benefit the people. It is obvious, this council is married to our city unions, and they show no interest in a divorce. In my opinion, the only way we Glendaleans can take back the city is to vote out of office all the incumbent candidates in April 2013 and bring in new leadership. Who speaks for the people tonight? Artie, would you please show the first PowerPoint? This is a Glendoe newspaper, Glendoe news press paper in April 2009, showing that the Firefighters Association and the Police Officers Association endorsed Laura Freeman, our Najarian, and Frank Quintero. Next PowerPoint, please. Here's another picture of Councilman Najarian, again, endorsed by the Firefighters Union and the Police Officers Association. And the next one, Artie, please. Our Mayor Frank Quintero. Isn't he pretty? He was, he was real young in that picture, remember? Again, these people are all under the thumb of the union and not the people who voted for them. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Wasn't that young, Mr. Mohill. Now, actually, Mr. Manukian, haven't you also received monies from Glendale?
No.
GPOA and firefighters?
A long time ago. I lost that election.
Yeah, but you did, though, right?
But let's talk about now, Mr. Quintero, not what happened in the past.
You're done, Mr. Mohill.
Of course, Mr. Najarian would say, what's done is done. Well, no, it's not. We see it every night, every week.
Done, Mr. Mohill. No, I've mentioned it to Mr. Mohill in the past, that you received money, but he never mentions you. I'm just, I'm not putting it on you, Mr. Manukian, I'm putting it on Mr. Zavos, I mean, I'm sorry, on Mr. Mohill, who...
Just for the record, the last election, I received no money from any union.
But you did in the other two.
And, yes.
Right.
I lost one of them, for the record.
So, so just so you're clear, Mr. Mohill, all five of us, and I think we're all proud of having been endorsed by, by the police officers and firefighters.
Council, my name is Harry Zavos. Tonight, I'll address two issues ignored by the city's legal memorandum that sought to justify $21 million of electrical fees being transferred to support general city services. To follow me, you must keep firmly in mind four distinct charter-created funds. The first is the Electrical Works Revenue Fund. Under the charter, all receipts are credited to this fund. The city's 2011, 2012 budget shows $21 million slated to go from this fund to the General Fund. That's the second fund to keep in mind. Article 11, Section 14 of the charter establishes this second fund, but names it the General Budget Fund. It states, in part, "The General Budget Fund is hereby created. All receipts from tax levy, licenses, fines, permits, and all other receipts except those from Glendale Water and Power," yes, "all those other receipts except from GWP shall be credited to it." It goes on to say, "The general appropriations, the kind that pay for general services, are charged to it." Here's the problem. This council approved $21 million of GWP electric receipts to go from the Electrical Works Revenue Fund to the General Budget Fund, even though Article 11, Section 14 of the charter expressly precludes GWP receipts from going there. How does the memo deal with this facial conflict between council actions and charter dictates? It doesn't. Nowhere does it discuss Article 11, Section 14. The sole charter provision upon which the memo relies for the transfer appears in Article 11, Section 22, the section that creates the GWP Surplus Fund. It states in part, "An amount equal to 25% of GWP's operating revenue shall be transferred from the Glendale Water and Power Surplus Fund," the third fund to keep in mind, "to the General Fund," the fourth to keep in mind. The charter-created GWP Surplus Fund is where monies left over, if any, after GWP needs are met, go. That's why the word surplus is in its title. The charter-created General Reserve Fund is a revolving credit line to advance monies to other funds to keep them on a cash basis pending the collection of taxes. With one exception, the advancements must be returned. Nowhere does a memo explain how, on the one hand, a charter provision authorizing the transfer of any possible excess electrical receipts in the GWP Surplus Fund to a fund that makes temporary cash advances to other city funds, is, on the other hand, authority for transferring $21 million from the Electrical Works Revenue Fund to a fund that pays for general services. I urge everyone who is interested to see for themselves what the charter says by going to www.o g g c dot org slash harry dot PDF and looking at Exhibit Roman numeral 1A, pages 1, 4, 5, and 6 of Part 3 of the document posted there. I believe anybody who is concerned about whether their city obeys its fundamental law should be concerned that that legal memorandum does not address the two issues I've raised
Herbert Milano, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council and city staff, City Manager Ochoa, I want to address some news to you that was of significant impact to California. An hour and a half ago, the governor of the state of California and the legislature came to an agreement on a pension, a sweeping pension reform change, an hour and a half ago. It does the following. It caps the salaries that could be calculated for pension at $110,000 for general employees and $130,000 maximum for public safety employees. In other words, those are the social security contribution rates. It also mandates a 50-50 share of the cost of the pensions. The retirement age is changed to 67 as opposed to 55. Public safety employees will now retire at 57 instead of 50. So the 2.5% at 55 that we had before is now changed to 2% at 62. For police and fire, the 3% at 50 is now changed to 2% at 62. It stops spiking of salaries for the last three years of employment. It limits the post-retirement reemployment. Let me repeat that. It limits the post-retirement employment, meaning that individuals who retire and then go back to work to get additional bite of the apple are prohibited from doing so. And it also prohibits retroactive pensions. The city approved retroactive pensions in 2001, allowing those changes to go back all the way to 1971. But there is a continual problem. That has to do with CalPERS and their investments. CalPERS return on Glendale's investments, which we now have assets of $1.3 billion, their return on investment was 1% for last year. Now, because we guarantee those investments, then the gap between that 1% and the 7.34, now 7.5%, we are now obligated to pay. Now let me show you how another state that has a public pension retirement system did. New Jersey, 2.6%. That was their return on investment. So what we are doing is we are guaranteeing the performance of an entity of which you have no control. And yet, we are there guaranteeing things, guaranteeing a significant amount of burden on the taxpayers. And I think that is still a significant problem. Still, it is my suggestion that this city council, perhaps as soon as possible at one of your next meetings, that you voice support for the governor on this compromise. Now, many public employee unions are going to be crying foul, but really, we have no choice. This is not so stringent as to what I have proposed, basically, to go back to whatever was in place in the year 2000. Because ideally, and it also applies to future employees, which is, to me, is still a significant problem for the current employees to receive, you know, I get all my benefits, but whoever comes after me, it really doesn't apply. So that 10-year gap still benefits a significant number of employees that have a huge impact on the actual aerial tables. When people retire early, we wind up paying for that differential between, on the medical expenses, the post-employment benefits, between the time they retire and age 65, when they're being taken care of, Medicare and Medicare. So... So as the medical industry improves and we have longer longevity, we live longer, we have to carry these employees for a much longer period of time as well. All of those impacts on the actuarial obligations are huge, which prevents cities throughout California from properly addressing the infrastructure part, the parks part, the addressing youth needs, addressing the elderly needs, and so forth. So it is my suggestion that this city show support to the governor on at least this step that has been so arduous in obtaining. Now, it applies to general law cities. I don't know if it will apply to charter cities as well. I don't know that information. Perhaps the city can find out. But I think it gives you a framework of really what we should be doing to finally tackle something. They have pretty much taken the bull by the horns and addressed it. And it is my suggestion for this city council to show support on this compromise. Thank you very much.
Margaret Hammond.
Sorry, sir, that I take so long to get here, but I wait till the end so I can be here.
You're perfectly fine. You don't need to make a grand entrance.
I make a good attempt, believe me. I used to ride a bike when I was younger, but I don't think I could keep the thing up these days. My name is Margaret Hammond, Your Honor.
That's why I mentioned tricicles.
Yeah, right, right. And members of the council, city council and staff, my name is Margaret Hammond. Okay, I got to tell you, free bulky item pickup, absolutely, 818-548-3916. And I keep getting people say, keep it up. And to require legal ID to vote, tpaq.net. That's all you have to do, and you will get the information. I have a bunch of other things, but my important thing right now is being able to discuss the article by Ron Kay in Sunday's paper, 826. And I'll give these to Artie if people haven't gotten that paper, that article, who, and he does support, Harry Zavos. But maybe we ought to retitle it and call it, maybe, Rome's Senators' Troubles with the Christians. In other words, are not Harry and the other troublemakers, so to speak, quote, unquote, who come before city council, not unlike the Christians, who would not give up their beliefs and were thrown in the arena to be killed by soldiers and eaten by the lions? The handful of believers who do come before city council, week after week, and are put down, insulted, disrespected, for their beliefs and for the fact that they will not give up coming here. They believe that some of the city of Glendale, the rules and what goes on financially and so forth, need some revamping and reworking. I know for a fact that many Glendaleans agree with the people who come here, but they will not stand before city council and give you their opinions or present the facts and so forth, their concerns. And a lot of people agree with it, but they hesitate to come before you due to fear of being ridiculed and disrespected. Aside from the late hour of the oral communications, and they don't, it's hard for a lot of them to stay out so late, 11 o'clock at times, that it has gone. But you know what? Hey, who says hooray for Harry? I'm sure there are a lot of people who are out there are saying, hooray for Harry, and others who speak out for the rights that we believe we are entitled to, speak out at this meeting and for you to listen to us. We've elected you to do that, and we feel that it's only right that you do it. And after all, you know, you got a spoiled child, you need to do something about it with a good smack or whatever is necessary. And I say to the people out there who sit and listen to these people come week after week and say, we think you're doing a great job, but never come to do it, I say, you know what? Get off your duffs and come out and do it yourselves. Don't be always just calling us up and saying, hey, you're doing a great job. Now, the other thing that I'm really upset about is the fact of the apartments down there, that they're going to allow 27 more apartments to be in 229 that were approved, and they're adding to it. Ridiculous. We have the densest population, you keep putting those projects down there, you keep going, and now you're putting this one and adding to it. Now, is there going to be enough parking? No. I mean, at the corner of San Fernando and Los Feliz, you wait five minutes to go either way. If you're lucky, it's only five minutes for the traffic. So here you are dumping another lot of those lousy projects on our end of the city. And you wonder why they say South Glendale. Well, the city council helped to do that. I'm not saying you guys particularly. Some of you were on city council when these things were approved, but I'm just saying, it's not fair. And I don't see why another 29 units are going to be added. I haven't had time to really look at it, I just saw it in the papers, so I haven't had time to investigate as to parking and so forth in the facilities in the area. Thank you.
Okay, any comments from the city council or staff? I hear none. Ms. Nogarian.
I have a few. And remind me that there's new business, too. I just have a question for our city attorney, Mr. Garcia. Let's say, a hypothetical city council member, let's call it Mr. Mohill, came to city council and was able to obtain three votes instructing the Director of Finance to unilaterally cut the pensions of our retirees. What would happen?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Nogarian, your point being, it'd be subject to litigation, there's...
We'd get sued.
Absolutely.
Because that can't be done. The city council cannot unilaterally go back and reduce pensions, which were previously agreed to contractually. Is that correct?
It's a complicated question, but essentially, there's two issues. One is, obviously, there's a negotiation aspect of it with the representatives of those employees. And then there's significant case law, which gives those employees the right to the pension to which they, when they, once they vested, the right to receive that benefit or something substantially similar. So you're right, it cannot be just unilaterally eliminated or reduced to the point where they don't get the benefit of their bargain.
And then perhaps the best way that the pension issue can be dealt with, whether it's through CalPERS or any other agency's retirement fund, is through state legislation, as Mr. Milano has indicated and informed us of a new, it hasn't passed, but it's been proposed by the governor and is working its way through. Would state legislation affecting pensions be permitted?
That's correct, Mr. Nogarian. There's really two, two steps, probably more than two steps, but two key steps. One is, the legislature does need to amend the requirements of CalPERS before any local agency could then implement them. And then there's also a process in place for both the representatives of those employees and the employees themselves to have essentially a role in saying what their pension benefits are going to be.
I encourage Mr. Milano to take his advocacy directly to the representatives, the State Assembly and the State Senate, to express his concerns. Whether the council takes this up, I have my own personal views, and I'll be happy to express them at the appropriate time and the appropriate place. The last item I'd like to discuss is, we keep talking about a $21 million transfer going into the pockets of the pensioners, I guess, is what the statement was. And last week, I did ask the city manager to explain to me what $21 million would do to the budget. It's 12.5% of the general fund. Cutting the transfer of the $21 million would mean either firing 49 police officers, which is about a quarter of our force, it would mean firing 28 firefighters, which would mean, by my estimation, at least closing one fire station, or it would mean closing our library totally and closing the maintenance of all of our parks. So those folks out there that think we shouldn't be transferring the 20 million, please send me an email. Choice A is 50 police officers. Choice B is 28 firefighters. Choice C is no libraries and no park maintenance. I'd just like to get the sense of where the priorities are of those that ask us to cut, because I just like that. Thank you, Mr. Nogarian.
Any other comments?
Yeah. Well, I guess you're kind of damned if you do or damned if you don't. I agree with Margaret Hammond that speakers should always be given respect. That's absolutely true. But what I meant by damned if you do and damned if you don't, that sometimes if we don't comment, people will say, you ignored me because you didn't comment. But if we do comment, people say, you're being argumentative. You should agree with us. So I agree that speakers should always be given respect, but I think that it's, that respect does not always mean agreement. So if speakers are coming and upset that we don't necessarily always agree with everything that they say, that's a dialogue, and that's always going to happen. If speakers are upset because council members are rude, that shouldn't happen. We shouldn't be rude. I would just like to comment on Mr. Zavos, and I haven't really commented much on Mr. Zavos's presentation, but I'm going to tonight, with all respect, which is that I find it interesting, he's been coming in front of us about the electrical transfer for quite some time now. And what's interesting to me is how his argument against the transfer has morphed over time, and it's taken on different facets. You know, he really hates this transfer, which is his right to hate the transfer, but his argument against it has really changed. In the beginning, it was that it was unconstitutional by state law, but after the response from the city attorney, we haven't heard that for quite a while. I think that he's agreed at this point, and I want the public to understand that, it seems to me, he's agreed that it is constitutional, that is it Prop. 29?
26.
26, thank you. I keep flipping that number in my head. The Prop. 26 argument that he's made has disappeared, and now it's morphed into an argument about language in the transfer, and, sorry, language in the charter. And that language is confusing and convoluted, and it's contradictory, a lot of it, because he talks about the surplus fund, but then he talks about operating revenue. Well, how would operating revenue ever be in a surplus fund, anyway? You don't put operating revenue in a surplus fund, so just on its face, that whole line in the charter, to me, seems very confusing. If it's operating revenue, it's going to be in a different fund besides a surplus fund. If the argument is that anything in the surplus fund is only extra, well, then why is it referred to as operating revenue? That just doesn't make sense. So I think that the language, to me, and I'm not an attorney, is confusing, which is maybe why we should look at cleaning it up, because even though the charter's been looked at over the years, this section of the charter, as far as I know, has not been revised, and as accounting practices are, as the, you know, as our finance director said, are rather obsolete, people just don't do accounting like that anymore. And I agree, we should clean that language up. But to me, cleaning up language doesn't mean that we're violating the charter by doing this, when the charter clearly says 25% of operating revenue should be transferred. Making arguments about which fund they're in, to me, you know, it's not the, I don't think that that comes to the intent of what the charter meant for us to be doing. And I know that we have a disagreement about that, but I've looked at this language as well. And to me, if it's operating revenue, it's not surplus revenue. It just doesn't make sense that they would call it that. But it's an interesting, I've learned more about that section of the charter and about that part of the law than I ever thought I would when I ran for council, so it's been an interesting dialogue. I guess last, I'll just address, since it's early and it's 8:30, we never get out of here at 8:30, address some of the pension arguments. First, I do find it interesting, as the mayor referred, that the council, some of the critics will come up and they'll say, the pension mess that's going on is the fault of four council members, but not the fifth one, because he didn't take money this last time around, I guess, from the unions, even though he's made the exact same votes as the rest of us. So to me, how you vote is what's important. I just find it interesting, I'm glad Mr. Manukian has voted for the same contracts as the rest of us, but I don't know why he can cast the same vote as us, and he becomes a hero, and we cast the same vote and we're villains. I just find that interesting. I'm glad that the state is taking a pension reform. It's long overdue. And I'll tell you, the many, one of the reasons they're doing this, besides public pressure, is pressure from the cities. The League of California Cities has been asking for pension reform at the state level to sort of help all of the cities do this, and the group that I, on whose board I sit, the Independent Cities Association, has also passed resolutions and asked the state to enact this pension reform. So it's not as though the cities are being dragged along. I think the cities have been pushing this issue for quite a while. A lot of what the state is doing, we've already done, a lot of it. And I think what they're trying to do, and it hasn't passed yet, and I think what they're trying to do will help us in the long run. It won't help us immediately, because it's not going to affect existing employees, it's only going to affect new employees. It's a new tier system. But down the road, it will help California with their issues, and it will help the city with their issues. So I don't know what's going to happen, we'll find out over the next few days. All the comments I have. Thank you.
I think tonight is the first night that I've been called a hero, so...
It's for the biking, all the biking stuff.
Yeah, no, it's not. I disagree with pretty much everything you said, actually, and I also disagree with your finance director. I did not want to weigh in on this issue, but it seems like it's kind of, based on your comments, your comments are morphing into something that is not correct, actually. Accounting procedures haven't changed to the extent where you have to change the charter. Charter is clear in what it demands. It asks you to operate your utilities and any remaining funds to put it in the surplus fund. From those funds, you can transfer monies, and that is the point that Mr. Zavos is making, not a direct line transfer before, before any of the revenues are determined for the operating, operating of the utilities. And it also burdens us to make sure that the utilities are run efficiently and they are not run at a deficit. That's why, that's why that is there. It's not because the accounting procedures are, have changed over so many years, they have not. What has changed is the way we account for the transfers. You cannot allocate the transfers as a line item as part of your budget, and that is the item that I disagree with. And if this council feels that that has to be changed in the charter to accommodate the way we're accounting, which is not different than, which is not a different accounting procedure, if this council feels that we have to change the accounting or that we have to change the charter to accommodate the way we are transferring the funds, then that is fine. Put it up to the vote of the people. If they say yes, that's how we want you to do it, then it's fine. If the people say no, then it's no, you should not be allocating $21 million from the beginning. And I've said it in the past, that as a council, we have no choice, we have to transfer that money, when what Mr. Nogarian said is correct. If we don't transfer those funds, there are other alternatives that we have to do, and they're not, it's not a pretty sight. We have to cut police, we have to cut fire, we have to cut services. It's just a fact of life, we have to transfer that money, that's not the issue. The issue is how we're transferring it, and for now, as long as no one is challenging it, that's fine, but you should put it up to the vote of the people, and if the people say that, yes, the charter is not written properly in terms of the transfer, the transfer should be able to be done before any of the operating results are determined for the utilities, then that's fine. But if you can't determine the operate, and you don't determine the operating results of your utilities at the beginning of the year, you determine it after your operating results. Therefore, the funds should not be transferred before, and it should not be part of the line item of the budget. It should be as a, as an afterthought. So you would allocate your last year's revenues to this year. That is the only way you can do it, last year's operating income to this year's transfer for the electric fund. Same thing with the water fund, and Mr. Zavos was one of the individuals who brought, was up here, actually, for months, and we should give him credit for it, and we have before, not me, but I think individuals in the community and on the council, for bringing up the issue with the water transfer. And that turned out to be, he turned out to be correct on that one. And that turned out to be, he turned out to be correct on that one. And I'd hate to see him turn out correct on this one. So, which would put us in a very bad light, actually. What I think we should do, we should take all of these issues seriously, look them over, and make a determination whether we should put it up to the public for a vote, and Mr. Zavos has said in the past, put it up to the public. If they vote yes, then it's a yes. If no, then it's a no. And that's the bottom line. Leave it up to the people, and let's stop arguing back and forth about what an operating revenue is or what a transfer is and which line item it should be, it should be allocated as. If the public says, let's transfer it before the operating revenue, and don't worry about the utility's viability, then that's fine. Let's transfer.
I believe the staff is already working on a proposed Charter amendment.
Yeah.
For us to review. They were already directed weeks ago.
Any other comments? Do we have new business?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city attorney be, and hereby is authorized, to pursue additional appellate review of the matter entitled Scholars Academy Foundation Incorporated versus City of Glendale at L., case number EC 052590.
I have a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Mnuchin?
Yes.
Nogarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Second.
We are adjourned.